The CEO of GD?
We ready?
Yeah.
All right, roll call our meeting to order. Uh, roll call all councilors present. Any business on the floor or public comment? I saw you in that first room.
My rescue truck is starting to give us some issues. So I don't know. We'll have to take a look at it, put it on the scanner or something, but we went to a call tonight. It stopped four times. And you can only get what fifteen miles an hour?
Yeah, it scared me. We had some other issues I really couldn't identify when I was driving it tonight. But it's not, it's not roadworthy in my eyes and...
I'm the first one to work on it a couple of weeks ago.
Mm.
Uh, but something's wrong with it. I just wanted to make you guys aware of it. Uh, got some rocks on it.
Okay.
Just proof of thought. You might see me back.
The car draws light.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. The car draws a light.
Potential, so...
Just wanted to make you guys aware of it.
Yeah, we didn't get looked at in the meantime.
Yeah.
Uh, do you have something?
Yeah, um, I was just wondering if the cameras at the rec center and at the public library are functioning properly now? And why, what's functioning properly to me is, are they recording? I know that a few weeks back, when I asked to see some footage or something, the camera, I was told that those cameras do not record, so we cannot go back and look at footage. And I was under the impression back in July, or maybe even August, that when this new camera thing came in, that all these cameras were supposed to be able to be, um, re- looked at, and they were all going to be under one thing. And I think it was like ten thousand dollars or whatever that we paid for these cameras. And if they're not functioning, you're not going to pay somebody to sit there and just watch them. I mean, if there's an issue that's going on over there, you're not going to find it if you don't have something in recording.
Yeah, I guess the bylaws, I mean, they should record the cameras.
But I, but they don't record unless it's motion. If there's a motion sensor, I recall, so they do record, but it, it has to be triggered by motion. So somebody has to walk by the camera.
Well, then, then I was told something different.
No, but no, they, what the camera is, it's on the li- it's on the rec center. It's one camera with three eyes inside of it. They are recorded. The recording stays for at least thirty days. So you can be able to go back and get the recording. We can save them just like we do with...
That's not what I was told the night that I asked about the recording.
Were they working then? When that, the issue was just coming out?
They were working at the Third Eye Global. We could not get them here. They were all set up?
Okay.
Completely no.
Yeah, so I, I realize this is the first time council had an opportunity to discuss the GND item number six under new business, which is establishing a civilian advisory group for Ashland Police Department. And I also realize this is the draft, but I give a few thoughts on the draft. One, put it to need for the town to have such a group. And then I'd recommend council check with the main municipal association if you determine this is the right you want to go, to see what other municipalities in the state have such a group, so we can use that as a template. Uh, the list of people recommended to be on it does not include a town citizen. It includes business people, educators, but not a town citizen. I think at least one town resident should be on that. Uh, the proposal, the draft proposal recommends the chief select the, the, uh, people on the group. My recommendation would be to have the council select the people in the group. You know, maybe the chief can recommend, but I think council needs to select the people on this group or board. I'd recommend it be called a board or committee because that's what the town uses now. That's the technology the town uses now. Under functions, it talks about disseminating accurate information in crisis situations. Well, this supposedly means quarterly. A crisis situation, you want best information. That should be coming from the police department. It should be the standard routine now. If any information comes from the P E as authoritative. They also talk about community buy-in, and my question is, what are, what are they wanting to box in? Why do we need community buy-in? That's something you may want to look at. Chargers and bylaws, I kind of hit on that. You want to touch base with main municipal to see if anybody else is doing it. Use a template or maybe the association and chief of police if you decide to go this way. Um, define policies, practices, and training requirements. As most of you know, most of these are already mandated by the state. Training, use of deadly force, all those types of things are mandated by the state. And then to ask citizens who are not, uh, trained, educated, mercenaries, I think, could cause some problems. And, um, lastly, logistics. Agenda should be posted on the town website as current boards and committees are not a subpage to the police department as it's currently recommended. Currently, boards and committees are listed separately on the town's own page. If this is going to be a board committee or even a, even a group, it should be so listed. And then finally, just a, a thought that if we do go, if the council does go forward with this, any policies, any bylaws, you probably want to bet with legal because you're dealing with the police department and with the religious society we're in today. You, you want a legal look at that to make sure we're not doing something that we think is right, but might end up sitting in court.
Yeah, it is, I mean, it is a, you know, a new thing we're looking at, so we'll definitely take it very seriously.
Are all of you aware of what he was just talking about, what we were looking at doing?
No.
No, I'd like to know where you got all that information, all I got was from here.
So, so it's on mine. So I, I saw the agenda in the store.
Okay.
And I had a question on one agenda item. So I contacted, sent all the council members an email. Three of them responded. Monday morning, I came and I talked with the town manager and went in and talked to him. And he was kind of, he gave me a copy of what was presented tonight because it is public. And we, we spoke for seventy minutes about it. So I would say that, uh, council and staff have been responsive in my questions. They just had to go and say, what can you tell me about this? So, yeah, I appreciate them doing that because that makes me better informed. And then when I come up and say something, that kind of made it sort of a lot of talking about me something, what you folks are saying for the first time tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else? Ellie, Ellie, did you hear something?
Um, I, um, so the town Christmas lights, I get the, you know, some fundraising to like request them, do you know?
All the ones on the pole?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you've been donating to you.
Mm-hmm.
It's a great idea.
So Ellie was talking about, um, updating the town Christmas lights, some newer ones. And trying to come up with ways to, to help fund it. So she had some ideas of different fundraisers that we possibly could do. And get some kind of support. What did you have for ideas, Ellie?
I had a bottle drive, big bill with the vet trivia night, a congestion stage, a fifty fifty rocket, a field day, maybe like ten grand donation.
Nice.
Make, make sure you leave your list with Ms. Jim over here, so we'll have it installed. We'll be able to start looking at that. It's a twenty twenty five project.
We did that make it tonight.
Yeah.
All donations, forty thousand dollars on the like.
Wow.
Wow. They still have like ten thousand that aren't lit either. I don't know. Maybe how much?
How much, how much are they a piece, you know?
I don't know.
So, we kind of look briefly, um, they're like four to five hundred dollars a piece is kind of what I saw.
I wrote some financial letters.
And how, how many were we looking at?
Businesses.
Well, I think there's thirteen, thirteen to fourteen.
Fourteen, because they hooked one of the poles back up.
Oh, they did. Yeah, those are a piece.
Almost as old as you.
They had electricity, they gave you that one.
Couldn't even relate to Edison.
Is there any other, uh, business on the floor?
Uh, I just want to mention, um, when we lost the power, uh, the other day, the, the generator worked good and quite a few people came that day. Quite a few families, I mean, like mothers and their kids, they stayed, loved it all day. And everything worked good, had coffee going. The only, and some people brought in, there was a, um, uh, food pantry, you know, in the, um, the store, brought, brought some food. So we got that for next time if it's in India or something, and a couple of people made stuff. And the only thing I'd like to do, we gotta, we've gotta figure a way to get the, the bit for the stove so we can cook on it. We still cannot do that. That's something that's really got to be prioritized.
Be cheaper if you could move the stove and do it long.
Whatever, whatever's easy, you know, it'll be good time, it really does. I mean, we get that stove, it's brand new, never been used, because you can't use it.
Yeah.
I mean, and probably we could use it back. If we, if it gets a lot to go up, we should, you know, we gotta, we gotta do it very quickly.
Yeah.
I'm sure that's...
Thank you, Ellen, but if anything works out good next year.
Yeah, yeah, go again.
Anybody else? Okay, if you have any more public comment, we'll move to our, um, normal business. Uh, just around the office, the special employees are in here on the business. Uh, first item is the ten items approved minutes from the November twelfth meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the min- minutes from the November twelfth meeting.
Second item. Any suggestions on the minutes? All in favor? Okay, second item is to approve the twenty twenty four treasure warrants forty five D through forty nine P.
I make a motion that we approve the treasure warrants from forty five D through forty nine P.
Second item. Any suggestions on the warrants? All in favor? Was it two, like the other name, Tom? Did you hear it or what?
Oh. Yep, it's backwards.
Stand your back up. This, this was on top.
Hey, new business review is discussed and found off on the leasees' notice and client orders for twenty twenty five.
I don't understand.
Do you think there's a motion, fellas?
I don't understand, he's got the, the right date.
Yeah, twenty twenty five.
Uh, there is no date listed.
Okay.
It just says twenty twenty five. So is that something that needs a motion? No? Oh, they are dated twelve ten, sorry.
This is the deadline, we're graduating, present award.
So this is the date, one of the pages up. You just don't, there's no date on that one, right?
Yes.
This says twenty five, oh, April.
There is, that's the one that has the twelve ten.
Oh.
It said it's twelve.
Yeah, that's what, that was our old date for the short term meeting.
Yeah, we'll move ahead. Uh, so table number one for the, um, planning board report, Station Street subdivision review, phase one.
The planning board met last, uh, Tuesday, and they did their final review of the phase one Station Street subdivision feasibility study. And at this time, they, uh, are recommending basically no further action, uh, on moving towards a phase two of that project. Um, the primary two issues that they, um, were a no vote on in terms of the feasibility was number one, the encumbered deed, which we are aware of, the Lordly Club covenant that's been on the deed. Um, until that can be clear, you really can't do any career that property because it's got a covenant for recreationals only. Um, and then the second thing is the, uh, town's lack of financial slash technical capacity to, um, actually conduct a phase two. Phase two would probably include things like boat infrastructure, water sewer infrastructure, and utilities infrastructure. And their recommendation or thinking is, correct me if I'm wrong, saying how I say this, um, the town doesn't have the wherewithal financially to do this without additional funding coming from somewhere. Water district is probably not robust enough to actually do a complete water sewer underground project for that area and as well as whatever the utilities. Typically, a developer could do all those things, but at this stage of the game, their opinion is a developer probably is not going to consider taking on a project like that with the encumbered deed. You'd have to have a, a deed that was a nice warranty deed clear, that someone developed, becoming by property, to be able to do the things that we're talking about to further, uh, turn that into an actual housing subdivision. So, not that the project is totally dead, but from the planning board's perspective, um, it's, we're, we're, it's a table situation until the uncom- the encumbrance is taken off of the deed. Um, so that was their recommendations to the full council. Um, at this, at that time, not try to seek further grant funding to push this project along unless there is a willingness to also pursue getting the deed that uncovered. So, did I get that out right? Yes, thank you. Uh, and then the second thing that the planning board did is, you'll recall back in July, you voted a moratorium vote for Wind Energy Facility ordinance? Well, technically, we have found out that even though you did take that council vote, it probably, because it didn't follow the normal, uh, protocol, which would be the planning board would review and make a recommendation to the council about the moratorium. Um, they have now done that, okay? And what they have done is they provided us with a sample, and we have created a draft, what's going to be called a Wind Energy Facility Moratorium Ordinance. So it's a two-bakes document, and I've got it listed as a draft. But if you approve the document tonight, you'll be taking your vote to basically give the planning board a six-month period of time to work on an official wind facility, uh, or, yeah, wind, uh, uh, facility ordinance. So this is just the moratorium paperwork, and this was actually an example that we got from the town in Middleton when they did theirs years ago. So, uh, the purpose is having a moratorium document that once it's approved tonight, if you do approve it, we can post it. Then the planning board now then has a six-month window to work a formal ordinance just like you did back last April when you had them do the, the zoning and, uh, housing ordinance, I think it was. So the process will be the same once they start doing their deliberation. They'll get, uh, uh, a draft ordinance done up, and then it will be available for public hearing discussion. And then you'll do what you did, you have a special meeting, you can vote on it, and then you have a, uh, council that will draft that. So same process as all other ordinances, get a draft, bring a draft board, public hearing, get comments, questions, and then have an actual vote for, for that ordinance. So this gives the planning board, you know, the winner to, to work on getting the draft done.
I make a motion that we, um, approve the Wind Energy Facility Moratorium Ordinance provided by the planning board.
Any discussion on it?
Was this the one that, we talked about so much, was, they wanted to put a wind turbine down at the end of the, but we said no to that.
Yes, they were looking to take that Ashland and maybe Darkfield same time.
Yeah, they wanted to put the wind turbines down there off the road, and we said no. So that, that's...
Well, right now, if you do pass this, you'll have a six-month window to get an actual ordinance in place so that anybody that applies to do so in the future, it'll be subject to what's in the ordinance in terms of how they get approval or no approval.
Well, I think I heard you say when you were explaining this to us is what we did was not the proper procedure, so it was on a binding vote.
Right.
And what we're doing now is the proper procedure, and so it's binding and hold up in a court.
Right. And, um, for, for, if for some reason, planning board needed it longer than six months to actually get a draft together and go through these motions, a moratorium can be renewed for an additional hundred eighty days. So we have time and protection by having the moratorium in place to get a, a document created.
All in favor of adopting that? Any more?
So we have to sign this?
Uh, no, all we have to do is, we'll have it in the minutes that it's approved. And what I'll do is when I reprint it, it'll take the word draft off, and that'll be the official document without today's date, and our minutes will reflect that it was approved by the council. And we put it on the website, and anybody, uh, puts in a permit application for it, it's subject to the moment, so that's time as a matter of fact. I guess we'll have you start doing this after that.
Next item, review discussed, a moment of equipment for sale, my CO bid items.
So in your, uh, packets, we gave you, uh, a list of four items that we want to put back out for CO bid, one being the, uh, dozer that was on the original list from before, uh, last meeting, and the Ford model L nine thousand. And we're adding two, those two items that have been tabled off the last list. The twenty twelve, uh, Chevrolet Tahoe was a vehicle from the police department with a, um, minimum bid that we did a blue book on it. And we feel com- comfortable starting and did at least four thousand on that vehicle. And then the last item, the nineteen ninety five trackless MT sweeper. I did put a, a, uh, position paper here, or sweeper issued paper, to give you the details on that. It was a nineteen ninety five, um, piece of equipment, and this was, the last time it was sort of used was when we had a problem, uh, with OSHA. They came by and they fined us fourteen hundred dollars. We got reduced to a hundred and forty dollars when it was in use. There was a busted cab issue. There was an issue with, uh, exposure to, uh, crystalline silica. Uh, we weren't using water at the time when we were, uh, using a sweep portion to cut, to cut down the dust. And, uh, there was an issue with high visibility apparel. Um, the unit has not been used. It's over, it's about thirty years old coming into this new year. And Stacy, who is here from the highway department, his recommendation is because of the age and the part issue, that we do include the, uh, this piece of equipment, uh, in our CO bid sale. And, um, we're not anticipating at this stage to do a replacement of that particular piece. And I will address that when we talk about, um, a backhoe, um, potential purchase, uh, in the next, uh, the next item. Um, but the idea is, uh, if we do move forward with a different piece of equipment that can pick up some of the duties that this old piece of equipment is doing, that's probably the best way to spend our funds in the future is getting a piece of machinery that can do multiple functions, that can pick up some of the things that the sweeper was doing. Um, I will be talking about, um, in my manager's report, um, that we put out requests for folks for sidewalk, uh, snow removal. So I'll defer that conversation later then on that. Um, but the idea is we want to let you know that, uh, I looked at it along with Chief Seer. We went and looked at the L nine thousand, and we're both of the opinion that it's not a priority and we would not want to put any of our employees at risk charging for that truck. And it's being its part now, hasn't been used, and I think that was one of the reasons, a reason why it was on the list the last time we ran out of CO bids. So this is the four items that we would like to, um, give permission to publicize in the Star Herald and, uh, do, uh, a, a sale for these items. And hopefully, a couple of the bidders that had bid on both the dozer and the, uh, L nine thousand will come back and potentially place bids again. And then I do know of one interested party that may have some interest in the sweeper, and I don't know what we'll get for the Tahoe in terms of interest in that. But the engine, it's only got a hundred fifty, four thousand, so the engine and drivetrain are still pretty cheap. So somebody may want that just for purposes of the, uh, engine and the drivetrain and transmission part of it. Because I think, is it the floorboards, chief, that are kind of rested out on that, on the Tahoe?
Yes.
Yeah. So body needs some work, but engine-wise and drivetrain is still pretty cheap. So we should, I would think someone would need to adjust it in that. So this is the list, so I'm, can I answer any questions, be it about the sweeper being added to the list or any else you have questions on this, ours?
Want me to make a motion so we can discuss? Which one?
Oh, we just, that's whatever. You guys have any questions?
Do we have any obligation to the people that bid the first time we're not done those? those two items that we declined or offered or we didn't sell them to?
Uh, my personal opinion would be I don't think you have any obligation, uh, if you put it out back for CO bid, you may have a right to rebid.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's, I just don't want it, I don't want somebody to come after us because they bid, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Cause they've already bid one.
Right.
And now we're putting it out again. We did put on our ad that we could refuse any and all bids the other time, right?
Right, yes.
I make a motion that we put up these four pieces of equipment listed in the sweeper notice.
How can we not jump on a second? What's going on? Too hard?
I second everything. I don't like second everything.
There's a reason why. There's a reason why.
What are you thinking?
Why, why didn't we decide with that dozer? I'm just wondering how it comes back up. What did we decide last time?
We thought there might be parts for it, but there's no parts for it.
Where'd they go? There's a lot of parts on that.
There's four rolls in the spring for that. Nineteen seventy-four, what are you doing?
We're still in the same situation, all right? It's going to be replaced or something. The, I'm not excited about getting rid of equipment without knowing that we have something to take care of it, but I'm not the expert and when the person comes back, I've visited with Jim, but when the person that's doing the job that we've hired to do the job comes back the second time, even though I'm really worried about selling this stuff, it's hard for me to say I don't trust you because we've hired you to do this.
That's true.
And that's why I made the motion and I hope Jim still likes me. Because I'm not the expert and we've hired somebody to make recommendations to us. I dropped my keys as long as I could, I gotta act on hopefully what our experts have, but there's not the tons and tons of money to buy new equipment, we're really poor. We're really poor, so it's, there's not a lot of money, so. Would you be more comfortable if it was the bottom three, not the, with the, without the dozer? I'm okay with it, but I'm kind of acting on the person that we tried to hire.
Do they amount of money that it would take to fix the bulldozer?
Yep.
We could hire the, as often as two years to strip the pit, we could hire it up cheaper every two or three years, somebody to come for a few hours to strip the pit and, you know, that's one less piece of equipment.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
That's, that's just my thought.
That devil's advocate says if we're going to bring somebody in to do it, then why do we need three people working for us for the town? But that, I'm still going, if you know, I'm just, that's the other side of it and I, I do think we need our people, so I, I do see both sides. But I'm going to try to go with the person that we hired.
Now, have they took in, done any type of, uh, see what it would cost to replace, replace it?
Have you checked into that, please?
I'm just, legitimate question.
Used?
No, but to replace it. Have you checked in to see the cost of replacing it?
Replacing the bulldozer or fixing the bulldozer?
Yeah, replacing it. Do you need a bulldozer?
I don't, you're better off.
Well...
For what, you...
I'm not even saying replacing it with specifically a bulldozer, but what are your intentions to, to use to take place of that bulldozer, I guess is what I'm asking.
See, this summer the pit's gonna have to be stripped back, so for two hours of work, you're better off to have somebody come with a big tractor and do it.
And that's the only thing that's used for, the bulldozer?
Pretty much, I mean, well, pushing like on the camber and right bill, flat dog, something like that. I mean, if you bother to use the dozer, you're talking sixty.
All depends on what you find, I mean.
To use it.
You might be applying one for twenty, but who knows? Um, I mean, even fixing that one, I mean, I, I still think it's going to be a pretty, pretty big pain to fight.
There's still a whole piece of equipment.
And I'm saying this as a person, we'd most likely probably fix it, so, you know, I don't take the fourth of town's money to spend ten or fifteen grand if that, you know, to fix that. Um, the undercarriage, one side frame is completely routed, so we have to either rebuild that side frame, maybe find a use on somewhere, but, I mean, it's three liter intensive, so I just don't feel it's worth the money to put into it for what it's utilized for.
Well, can't, if you put a minimum bid on the Tahoe, why can't you put a minimum, cause the bids we got, I think were nowhere near what, what they could have been. So I think if you, at least put a minimum bid on that.
Okay, deep tire, not the impromptu. Now, how's the motor running?
The motor's, is decent.
So diesel motors, what, to replace diesel motor, a used one, you can get for what, six, seven thou, six or seven thousand bucks for a used one?
Yeah, for a used one.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just hypothetical, I mean, I don't know.
Applicable to buy two diesel horses, forty thousand each.
Yeah.
He said used.
Used. Yeah, that's the only board.
That's more than application.
Because of the forty, but I grabbed a few people for my thing.
Um, I, this is my opinion, but, I mean, obviously I'm open to whatever you guys want to do, I mean, you, everybody has the same say, so, I don't know.
So you're thinking just rent out, just sub out the job, sell the equipment?
Or wait, or strip the pit, I mean, every three years?
You put that money into that dozer, in three years' time, how much more money you got to put into it? Then focus on, can't focus on doing, you can do one thing, you need something for the fire department. Price for everything has gotten ridiculous. Cause we're looking at replacing the backhoe down at the water district and we were going to do it this year, but now, we're talking a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a piece of equipment. Well, that site you was looking at, when you get those fire trucks, I mean, is there other sites for that, that'll just do, there must be other sites out there, you can get equipment there.
Not sure what they're, they're not.
No, no idea, Tom.
It used to be a site, the founder's one, terrible at that.
Yeah. So you are, you know, there, minimum budget, you...
Well, I'm not forced to ask that, right? I, I just think that the bids that we had last time were not any, not nearly what, you'd be better wondered, hey, what? I mean, you did agree last time, right, that those were very low bids?
Yeah.
That was very low bid on that.
And by the people that did it, were the scrappers.
Yeah.
So, you want to put a minimum bid of four or five thousand on that, then? You don't get anything, go from there?
Um, yeah, yeah, I feel, I feel good about that, I think it should be at least four or five thousand.
So it's over five then?
Add that to the motion, please.
We still don't have a second.
No, I know that, but if somebody ever seconds it, then...
I'll second it. Are you going to jump on that?
I would, you're fine, Tom, I would ask, but I would pick you if we were all ready for it or not.
Any more discussion on the items? All in favor of selling the items, let's see if he added, um, minimum bid for the go through. You discussed and vote on that way department equipment, so which is your question?
So Stacy has been, um, diligently keeping an eye on potential opportunities for a used backhoe unit, well, how the apartment, the packages, I gave you a, a little bit of a purchase proposal, uh, discussing, um, the types and models in terms of functionality and we had one that money fit to bill, but it got sold before we could, you know, we missed an opportunity to, to, to consider, it has a potential buy, uh, coming through the council, but he did find another one and I'm going to go ahead and just pass this around, um, it's a used backhoe, it has about nine hundred and sixty-three hours, it's a Volvo, it was formerly owned by an electrical company and it was used primarily for underground vehicles and electrical vehicles and, uh, it is available at, uh, thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars and, um, unfortunately, this model doesn't have what, a former model that he was looking at where it had a, uh, a dual function on the front where the bucket could be turned into a flat plate, so you could actually do some dozer type work, but the safety indicates that you may be able to find a used attachment that can be put on a backhoe that, that can function, has a dozer capacity, but that's certainly down the road. This kicker unit, obviously, as you'll see here from pictures, it has basically the front bucket, uh, it has the back, uh, bucket with the arm and, um, what Stacy is, um, thinking about in terms of the functionality of this unit is his first, uh, piece of equipment that potentially could be bought, um, to complement this unit would be a, a bush hog unit that can attach to the back end, take the back bucket off and you can hook up the bush hog, so that would get one of the functions from the old sweeper, so it could do all the side, the street, uh, by the side, uh, grass cutting and down the road, a future opportunity with this piece of machinery is they do make sweepers for it, so you could actually buy a sweeper down the road in another year or so and so you have that functionality of the backhoe plus a potential sweeper plus the, the, uh, bush hog unit. So one, one piece of machinery to maintain, uh, basically three to four functions in terms of its ability to be used, um, and this would sort of modernize to some extent our, uh, alien equipment, aged equipment that in the highway department and as I showed here, showed you here on the sheet, the current, uh, equipment account after the last CO bid sale was sitting on thirty-three thousand four hundred fifteen dollars in the highway equipment reserve account. Their end of year of estimate in terms of, uh, funding, uh, inside the, um, highway department, we believe they'll be coming in under budget and there likely will be a carryover of around thirty-nine thousand two seventy-seven, so, uh, if you add that to the, the new current balance as of, uh, this month, the thirty-three fourteen, um, before any purchasing, we have seventy-two thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars in the equipment reserve account and if you do a purchase not to exceed forty thousand, which will allow us to ba, basically buy this backhoe that you're looking at, the thirty-five five, and we, uh, got, we're figuring the estimates on the bush hog, ending up to buy a five foot or a six foot, I think we can purchase one somewhere within that four thousand to forty-five hundred dollar range. So, um, this price from this entity is delivered to Ashland at that price, um, so, uh, it's about a thousand dollar delivery, cause I think, what did you say, it was thirty-four thousand five hundred?
For the machine.
For the machine, so they basically only charging a thousand dollars for delivery from, is it Massachusetts?
Yeah.
Massachusetts, up here, yeah. So as you can see, even after the purchase, um, going into twenty twenty-five, he still would be sitting on almost thirty-three thousand in the reserve equipment account if we are successful in reselling the dozer and the L nine thousand, that's another forty-seven hundred, so we could be sitting on around thirty-seven thousand in his, in his reserve account, so that gives opportunity to potentially look at attachments a year or so from now for that same piece of machinery. So good thing for the box insurance if you can get four function others on the machine, so. I don't know, if, if you have any questions, Stacy's here to answer.
Well, the other question I have is you said we had a fine with the old sweeper because it wasn't putting any water out for the dust?
Well, that was one aspect, but it had a, but, it had a busted cab too, the glass was busted and...
So if you get a sweeper for this, you don't have any war, means of water, I mean, how do you...
Yeah, no, you hook up a water system on the back of the backhoe. Uh, Middleton knows this for their backhoe, they have a sweeper unit and they've got a water unit in the back and you just push water out, cuts the dust down.
Do it in the rain.
Yeah, or do it on a dry day.
Mother nature gives you all kinds of water, you don't need to do it on a dry day.
Right.
One time I went, it wasn't raining. Look, you have a fire truck going Friday, it's going to water down.
So he will be sitting still relatively good in his equipment reserve account, so he'll have a new piece of equipment there and we do have, uh, several streets that are going to require, uh, ditching work this year and fixing some culvert replacements, um, so, you know, our alien infrastructure is going to need some work at some point in time and this is the best thing for the box, piece of equipment that's going to help us get what we need to get done, so.
You're only going to assume that though, you're making it work double, triple times that we're outlaw fashion too, so, but it's, keep that down the road, put some money in there.
Well, that's why we were kind of liking this one, because it's only got nine hundred sixty-three hours, but these Volvos are good for twelve, maybe fourteen, fifteen thousand hours, when you can, I mean, they're pretty good, and then Chad Rock and Carefree have parts people, so it's easy to get parts for it, so should be able to keep it operational.
What year is this?
Uh...
Two thousand, sorry.
Yeah, I agree with you on that, on the multi-function deal.
So any more to accept that or do that?
I make a motion that we approve that highway department to move forward in purchase of the used backhoe.
Not to exceed forty?
Not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
A second.
All in favor?
That's it, I know we already had it.
Now we move to the, um...
Police, we're here, uh, step in.
Yeah. Um, you approve the police for the new vehicle, the new pickup for, uh, main cruiser for the police department, we, we have the truck, if you want to see it after the meeting tonight, uh, it's sitting out in the bay, uh, behind, uh, between the fire, uh, fire department trucks and so it's on hand, um, and unfortunately, when we started doing the, um, analysis of what we can or cannot use, cause if you recall, I mentioned we thought we were going to be able to utilize some of the old equipment out of the old backhoe, well, that is not the case, um, and Chief Steer has been working with, um, three different vendors to try to figure out what it is we're going to need in there and, um, there's been some new requirements that the county DA has put out, uh, in terms of interior, um, capacity for cameras in addition to the... for cameras in addition to the body cams, uh, in order to, like, for DUIs and things like that. You've gotta show the cameras, uh, what's being videoed from inside the vehicles. And so we went to three different vendors, and what you're seeing here is the best price out of the vendors that we looked at for the primary pieces, which is the mobile data, um, install, the, uh, uh, RCM build, which is the bulk of this, as you can see, which is the eighteen thousand three eighty-seven. So the mobile data, even though there's a no install cost, that is a, that's leased equipment. And that's, I think it's gonna be like a five-year lease, and if things either break down, and it's all warranted, so if either the PCs or the printers, things that are all associated with that system, if there's a replacement in there, if things aren't functioning, that's part of that lease. Okay, and that's a four thousand dollar a year, uh, fee for the lease. The install costs are your painting, which is just your striking on the outside for putting national places and stuff. The kit and the nine eleven, the camera system is an install cost of twenty-five ninety-four, but then there's an annual, uh, lease of two thousand dollars for the equipment. Um, we had a recommendation, uh, by one of the council folks that we should have studded tires for winter. So we've gotten the price on studded tires. It has ten ply tires on it, but, you know, ten ply tires are probably not gonna do us for winter months, and we need to have studded tires, so we included that here in this estimate. And then the RCM build of, uh, eighteen thousand three eighty-seven. So our totals here for the lease all to get it to operational is twenty-three thousand seven eighty-one. And then the annual cost each year on the leasing for the mobile data and the camera system is, is six thousand, which is roughly five hundred dollars a month. So what I did is I tried to give you what I think is sort of total cost over the length of the project, which is a five-year, because that lease is five years on this vehicle. So we're starting out with, we currently have thirty-seven six fifty in the equipment reserve account. And after the lease in twenty-twenty-five, making the four quarterly payments, which is the thirteen thousand four seventy-two, that would leave basically the twenty-four thousand one hundred seventy-eight, um, prior to this install, okay? So we are anticipating right now potentially a sixty-six thousand dollar, uh, carryover from the police department into twenty-twenty-five. So if that all goes into the equipment reserve account for the police department, his balance kind of at the first of the year, when we do the crossover and put that, those funds against that reserve account, would be ninety thousand one seventy-eight. We anticipate, we've got the one vehicle that we're doing a minimum bit of four thousand, and then we have a second cruise vehicle that once the new truck is in place, we would put that one out for, for bid. And that one, we're gonna be very conservative and say, well, now you only get six thousand for it, but it may be worth seven or eight, okay? But I'm anticipating a conservative number that we pick up another ten thousand to roll back into the reserve account. So when it's all settled down, we got a hundred thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-five sitting in the equipment reserve account for the police department, again, estimate. Now we do the install, take it from that account, twenty-three seven eighty-one, and then the annual fee for the, the two leases for the mobile data and the camera, six thousand. You subtract those out, it's gonna leave a remaining balance at the, roughly the end of the year of seventy thousand three ninety-seven in the equipment reserve account for the police department. But if we wanna look this all the way through to years two through five, that's what this next little section is. The rental for four more years, uh, for the mobile data and the camera system, that's gonna be another twenty-four. That's six thousand hundred four years, okay? And then the lease, um, the other four years at thirteen thousand four seventy-two comes up to fifty-three eight eight eight. So if you did nothing and put zero dollars into the equipment reserve account in years two through five, you'd be short roughly seven thousand and, uh, about seventy-five hundred dollars. But... There'll be other things that you'll be doing, and hopefully if there's reserve equipment crossover or, uh, from twenty-five to twenty-six, or twenty-six to twenty-seven, you have time to build funds into that account so that you can rebuild up the equipment reserve account. The bottom line here is, at the end of that five-year period, we're still able to take the lease on the mobile data and camera equipment, and it can be upgraded, and we, we're still paying the, the monthly lease on that. But at year five, we own the pickup, and we should be able to get five more years out of that vehicle. So years five through ten, if we take care of that vehicle, um, basically it's just normal wear, tear, maintenance, and the five hundred dollars a month for covering the internals for the mobile data and the camera. So I wanted to make sure that you had a complete picture here of the, the usage of this vehicle, what it's gonna cost us over the course of the five years. But year six, seven, and eight, even if we only got three years out of it, those, those three years, you still got a pretty good vehicle, hopefully it won't have that much mileage on it. Uh, and we might be at a hundred thousand by then, I don't know. But it's a Chevrolet pickup, some pickups are good for a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand miles if you take care of them. So, um, so what we're asking here tonight, obviously, is we need approval from the council to spend the, uh, I guess I would just round this up, not to exceed twenty-four thousand for the install cost, and approved, uh, six thousand annual, uh, for the, uh, lease rentals for the mobile data and the, and the system. Questions?
Do we already, I, I think I heard you say the camera system is something that's a new requirement?
Yeah, Chief, would, would you move, like, uh, Chief, the...
It's a new, the camera system in the truck is a new requirement, it's something we haven't had to pay for in the past, correct? Were we already paying for, like, the mobile data stuff anyways and other cruisers?
Hmm, no.
No.
No, but it was, how old was it? The old mobile data, that was in the old Tahoe? I mean, that was over ten years old, right?
Oh, for sure. They haven't had those on cruisers for a very long time.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're dealing with updated, uh, laptop, printer, and again, during the lease, that stuff breaks, they replace it. Yeah, exactly.
I make a motion that we approve, um, twenty, up to twenty-four thousand for the police outfitting, and six thousand of the annual funds. I mean, it's gonna come out of the reserve account, so it's no new taxes, right?
Um, that's, yes.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Next item, you discussed a vote on establishing a civilian advisory group for the national police department.
Uh, Chief had approached me a couple months ago, and he, uh, wanted to explore the opportunity to do an initiative, which he has labeled civilian advisory group. There are different terms, like civilian advisory board, uh, civilian advisory commissions. So there's a number of different names that you could utilize for this. And as you can see in the, um, workup that we did, uh, this is sort of like an initial draft of a discussion about what would be a civilian advisory group or the town of Ashland. Um, we are certainly not wedded to how it is listed at the moment in, in terms of this, this two-based document. This was just an idea to get this up and into discussion. We don't need to actually make a vote tonight, because I think Jim brought up some very interesting things that we ought to probably look at, and that is do some due diligence with MMA, see what, if there are some other samples and or templates in the state of Maine that we might look at. And, uh, my feeling at this day's beginning is we ought to at least table this for another month, give us more time for us to get some, gather some information, and come maybe with a little bit more granularity to what is going around the possibility. And if we can find one or two places in the state of Maine that might already be doing this, we could glean from what they're doing and basically update this request. But the initiative is, just to describe, the idea would be that it becomes a communications tool between the council, the police department, and the local community, have local people on the advisory group to basically do non, um, binding advice to the police department and to the council in terms of the police department and how it operates and how it does things. And it would help maybe, uh, improve communications across businesses, uh, school department, uh, and citizens in terms of concerns on how the police, um, department is operating, how things are being done, uh, if there are inputs from local citizens in the area on what they would like to see happen with the, with the police department in terms of either processes and, I mean, you made a good battle point, Jim, about, um, a lot of that is mandated from the state. So maybe what we would wanna do is see how other main communities have dealt with that, and see how they come up with a proposal when they first started. Again, this was just a, uh, an attempt on our part to get a dialogue going on this, and maybe get further input on how we could actually bring this to fruition if it's something that the council is interested in doing. And, uh, one of those comments that Jim did make earlier here about on this election, um, I tend to agree, um, that maybe the chief, uh, would help vet and get recommendations and get people who are interested to be part of this, but that the council could be the final arbiter to say, we would approve the, 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 uh, select group that would be asked to serve. And then at that point, the chief would be responsible as an onboard member to work with that new group and work on, on a quarterly basis, having, having a decent, work on things like the bylaws and charter and stuff like that. So a lot more homework on our part probably to bring you more, uh, information. But at least we wanted to tee this up, let you know about it, and say, tell you this is what we're, we'd like to continue working on. And we certainly appreciate comments from folks that give us an opportunity to go do some, uh, some homework and, and make it a little bit better than it currently is. Be able to share any success stories here in the state of Maine, I guess, probably before we do that. So, so unless you have any specific questions, I would just say, um, sorry, my concern is we're okay to table this for at least another month.
Do you envision this as a, uh, policy review board?
Say that again?
Do you envision this as, uh, reviewing policy and recommending policy?
Uh, I think it would all depend on how they prepare a set of bylaws and a charter, or if, uh, that might be something that...
Okay, so you're gonna leave it up to the group to figure out what they wanna do?
Uh, well, we, I think we would have to give some guidance based on what we do find out from MMA and through law enforcement in state of Maine. Because if there's saying, if there's certain things that are already mandated, that wouldn't be something that an advisory would be able to make advisory opinions on since it's already mandated. I mean, that would be something that'd have to go through normal law enforcement in state of Maine.
So they, so would they be, uh, responsible to, uh, would it be within their purview, I should say, to, uh, make sure that these mandates are being adhered to?
I don't know, I, I don't know enough to tell you that, to answer that fairly.
I, I think the manager's recommendation to table it at this time is prudent before there's any more discussion, because we don't know what we don't know right now.
Exactly.
I, I think the idea of it is, is great. Um, but yeah, if we can get better information on how to navigate legally, and, and broadly, I think it has a chance for, you know, for, for... I, I, I feel it would give the public, you know, more communication with the police department, and allow them to know if they don't know, mustn't offend, probably, for just good things, you know?
The bad stuff usually travels like law fire and someone that's so accurate and...
The motion that we tabled the civilian advisory group discussion for the police department to elect one, that we...
Okay, item is discussing nomination of a board, including the twenty-twenty-five town in force.
So your package included what I had, I think, put in the month before, and I had no new names given to me. And so unless there are other new names that may have come before in this council members, this is all that we have to present to you as far as names are there.
That's what I was thinking, okay.
Well, I would, um, definitely recommend, uh, person number one.
That one sticks up, we never stick all the sticks up to me. Those two, when I look at them, are the two that are the most associated with the town. And service to the community.
Then we do have room for up to three on page, we've done three in the past.
Dale or Tom, do you have any other, any suggestions?
No, um, I've only been in Ashland for twenty-five years, and some of these people I don't even know. But I agree with, with number one choice, I'd like to start the first one.
And you could go with just two, if that's your desire.
One's that stand out to you?
Yep.
Jill, are you ready for, or you want to stay calm before I make a motion, because we do have room for another one?
I was kinda thinking number five, but I'm going back, thinking of, of things that were... Here's, um, wreck poachers and tents and stuff like that too, that's been a lot.
Who's gentleman here?
Just throwing it out there, yeah.
You can make the motion whether you want it, can make it with the three or just the two, doesn't matter to me.
Either way, in, in...
I'm agreeing with that.
Either way, it's, it's fine with me, I just wanted to mention that it can...
I, I have like everybody on the list.
Yeah, I know.
I know everybody on the list.
The very guard.
I mean, they were all customers of mine.
Yep.
So, I mean...
I'll go for the three, I'll go for them. I make a motion that we dedicate the twenty-twenty-four book to numbers one, five, and six.
I'll second that.
There we go!
Beat ya!
All right.
Good.
Cause I was not struggling with that one.
Okay, next item is, no, we have a revision.
You do?
Select date for clarification from...
I talked, yeah, I talked, no, there was no, nothing on that one. Um, the water district is gonna do their January billing around the seventeenth or eighteenth, I think it is.
Yeah, it's supposed to be the second, the third week, it's gonna be out.
And they're ready to, um, a lot, uh, include in their billing, uh, a resource sheet that we've already got prepared up, that we, that we've dealt, throw it in the billing. So the twenty-second or twenty-third, I think a Wednesday or a Thursday night of that week. And we're thinking that those two, one of those two nights would be potentially a good night to do, uh, basically an open public hearing for people to ask questions. We will try to arrange to, uh, water district, their resident, uh, subject matter expert out of Kennebunk to be available on Zoom to deal with the rec center, have that set up so that he could be there to help answer questions that the water district may and may not be able to answer. Cause this gentleman was a superintendent, he was retired now, but he went through the whole process in Kennebunk fourth area. So, um, that way we can make sure that if people have any kind of questions, we'd be able to deal with questions. And again, this is open hearing to just discuss it, make sure that people, they will have already received their bill, or they will have that resource sheet, they'll have the sheets to pass out that night, anybody that walks through the door, um, they'll have a coffee table. And again, it's inquiry night before the vote, cause the vote will be in March. Um, and it'll be right about the same time that we're doing the... will be right about the same time that we're doing the, it's the 17th, the day of the vote will be March. So we're open to the date.
Wednesday or Thursday?
Yeah, I think it's the Wednesday or Thursday.
The 22nd or the 23rd, Wednesday or Thursday.
I don't have any written down, I'll actually just take it literally.
So do we have to be present for the public hearing or it's for the Town of Water Suitor?
Um, you know, it's a good question. I mean, it's a town that's hosting the referendum, so, but it's not, it's not a meeting, it's a...
It's a public hearing, so we would probably have to start the hearing and then the Town of Water Suitor.
Field question.
Yes, right.
I would rather do the 22nd. I have a family member having surgery on the 23rd, he has a major surgery.
Twenty second?
What is it? I'll go through that. On January?
Yeah. Twenty third?
Twenty second. So, I'll empty this one. We'll work with Linda on it.
Thirty?
Six thirty?
Their wifi still works over there.
Yeah.
Meredith?
No. She's at home, we need to make a commentary on that.
It won't hurt to have a motion that just says...
The public hearing? That was, that shows up in the minutes.
Yeah.
I make the motion that we set the date for the, the town meeting, the hearing for water coordination on Wednesday, January 27th at six thirty.
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
And I said...
Thank you, twenty second at six thirty.
I usually lose them.
Tom, there's a motion on the floor, I think, theory through this or in discussion, a motion in order to have the referendum for the fourite on Wednesday, the 22nd, January 22nd at six thirty.
Yeah.
All in favor? Um, item number 10, Trotting Park National Register Eligibility Request Commission, Kathy Howes.
I had included in your packet the letter that was addressed to Kathy Howes from the National Historic Preservation Commission. She had submitted the Trotting Park for consideration for eligibility under the National Register Eligibility System. And this is not something that, that the town has to make a decision on at the most immediate time, which is tonight, it can be done anytime. The fact that Kathy did this as a concerned citizen, as you saw from the response from the gentleman down in Augusta, they have included our property at this stage as a listing inside of the main historic resources inventory, okay, which does give it some protections until such time as we decide as a community, since the town nationally owns the Trotting Park, whether or not to further pursue the idea of going and getting a National Register Historical Landmark designation for the Trotting Park. And it is the Trotting Park itself, the track, that is the historical piece here. Now, there are pros and cons with this. The pros are in 2033, when the current recreation designation to the Trotting Park runs out, which was that 25 year issue you guys were dealing with summer, when that runs out, if you have, if you do not have a National Historic Preservation Marker or landmark approved by the federal government there, then you can do anything you want to do to that property. Subsequently, if somebody wanted to buy it and regain tax property once again and/or if you kept it as a recreation area, whatever, there's no hurdles here for you to have to deal with. That's sort of the pro. But the con is, okay, it may be difficult if you were ever looking for grant funding to do anything future in the park for something. As an example, there's been some discussion about would it be nice to have a picnic pavilion similar to what Portage has at the Trotting Park? And I did get a quote, and I'll pass these out, for the fencing, okay? We kind of did some estimates, got this paperwork from Portage, and we estimate to build a pavilion, which is about a 30 by 60 pavilion out at the park, similar to Portage's, probably at today's dollars is gonna cost you around $32,000 to $35,000, okay? And that's, we're talking, just like Portage did with, they had a nice concrete slab and then you've got the whole pavilion and the metal roof, et cetera, et cetera, okay? This fencing quote basically says about $39,000 in today's dollars, this quote is just fresh in today. So you're looking at, you know, $35,000 and $40,000, so that's $75,000 of potential improvement for the Trotting Park that if you didn't go forward with a National Historic Preservation, you're gonna have to either raise money, take it out of your budget, or do fundraising and get, do what you're gonna do with Christmas lights and do some kind of fundraiser to get funds to do projects like that out there. So the thing is, with a National Register, being included in the National Register, that does open up potential for grant funds because there are federal dollars available for historic areas. A lot of them are infrastructure based, though, I'll say that. The little work that I've studied, I'm guessing 80% or so is all infrastructure, like real estate updates and renovations because it's a historical site. The chances of getting money, like to do something with the actual trotting track, probably slimly none. But there might be money available down the road for something like a picnic pavilion because it's at a historical site, along with improved fencing to protect the area. So I just throw this all out for discussion now, and that is, we don't have to make any decision about contacting the main historic office to move it forward for potential national consideration, because we do have to go through the main office to get to the federal register or the federal system for the National Register to get it approved by the federal government. But if this is something that you are thinking, that you'd like to consider, and that you want to maybe improve the chances of some potential grant funds for a future pavilion, and maybe now that we know what it's gonna cost to do the fencing, that might be a way to get potential opportunity to get some grant funds, maybe you put in for a grant to do both things at the same time, you get a nice fence put in, you get a new pavilion in there, and it's at a, you know, if you get approved, and it would take about 60 to 90 days once it hits the fence, but the guy said in here, it would take, he sent me back and all that I had given you, that he couldn't probably look at our project until sometime later in 2025. So let's just say about this time next year, maybe third, end of third quarter, they would look at it at Maine. It would be early 2026, maybe February, March before we might even have a federal designation. But bottom line is, that might help our case to look and seek for some either federal and/or state historic preservation funds for that site. So again, pros and cons, if you do that, you're making a commitment, if you get it into National Historic Preservation, then you're making a commitment that probably in 2033, in order to do anything else with the property, you could decide that there was a potential buyer, you'd have to have the hurdles of getting it off of the National Historical Register. Not saying it's impossible, I don't know enough about that to know whether it's doable once you get on, but again, you know, it's one of those situations where, well, if you wanna, if you don't feel you can, you know, fundraise or raise the funds in the budget to do $75,000 of work up there to put a pavilion plus a fence, or if you only decide you want to do a fencing, because you gotta talk about that, at least you have some numbers now to work with, so. There's pros and cons here. Like I said, I don't need a recommendation tonight about what to do other than maybe we table this for further consideration, but I want you to be thinking of this because it's a kind of a big, big decision. If you decide to go for the Historic Register, it might open up some funding, there's no guarantee that it will, but short of that, you're either gonna have to raise funds and/or put it in budget, that you're gonna spend whatever you want to do, whatever you prioritize, whether you want to do the fencing project first, then maybe try to figure out something later for the pavilion. You know, again, it's just, I'm here to give you the numbers and then we kind of think through what might work and, you know, do the best thinking we can on how we think we want to get that in place. And again, if priority is fencing is more important, then you figure out how you want to do that first, then maybe the pavilion later, and maybe wait for grant opportunity through the National Historic Preservation, if there's grant funding even available for something like that. Because I don't know that there is, my first relook is, more money seems to be flowing towards infrastructure rather than, but the fact that the pavilion would be an infrastructure but it's not an old infrastructure, you won't be able to utilize that as a means. But the fact that you're potentially putting this recreational capacity, you're improving the recreational capacity at a National Historic Site, which is the Trotting Track itself, there might be some funding out there for that. We'd need to do more digging on it, but...
Water is still an issue there too, right? Yeah.
When you're under the National Historical thing, is there more regulations on what you can and can't do? Like, would like to say, oh, well, you can't have a pavilion this size, you have to do it this way? And how you do all that stuff, that's other things you want to think about because, oh, we want to put water there, okay, but you're gonna do it this way and you're gonna have this, which could be more money or less money. You know what I mean? I'm guessing. Because when you go to historical sites, things are a certain way versus the way we perceive it, that we would like to do, because they can't do it.
What about the camp sites where they have, does that affect them in any way?
Um, I don't know.
I think there's definitely more questions to be, the other thing I was thinking is, for something, for a decision like this, I feel it'd be right to bring it to a town vote rather than the four, five questions.
I would be happy to add. It would be easy to add that to it. It doesn't even have to be this year, but it could be next March.
Yeah.
Not a special election that costs us extra money, but our normal year, so...
Right.
Another thing, we do get a thing up there, what are we using it for? If we want it for wedding receptions, all that? If it's a historical thing, are we able to charge for it or not, or you know, any...
There's a lot of...
Another thing I'm thinking about too, like, why do they judge so much if you use it? Under that, can we?
I think if that had gone the way we want it to go this summer, I think that young gentleman probably would have put that stuff up there if he'd owned that property. We wouldn't have to go through any grants or whatever. I just, I really saw both sides of how that all came into play and, I mean, you think you're doing good for the town and some people think you're desecrating the town by doing that. But I do agree that you go in front of a vote.
Long-term commitments are hard to think about. You've really got to think about long-term commitments. Somebody didn't think of the long-term commitment till 33, what we could do to this when they did it. They thought, oh, look, we get $25,000, let's do this. And then now here we are, stuck in, you're stuck in a spot of where you couldn't do anything. You go to historical, which I'm not saying is wrong, but is there something else that...
Do the barn?
Yeah, installable? Well, it's gonna...
We'll move on, we're getting clean.
Yeah.
We have a whole business, Towns, Stars, Libraries, Association.
I was going...
Yeah.
I make the motion that we tabled the Trotting Park National Register Eligibility Request.
We got some letters here.
Yeah, and I did have an opportunity to see Betty Henry the other day, and I reiterate it, I reiterate about the usage of the libraries. And on the second, on the second page here is a letter from Gerard Charette. And Gerard basically sort of tried to make a comparison with other towns. Most important thing really here is his last paragraph, which is, if you change your mind about the $5,000, we can reissue another check since the 24 budget allotted for the actual library was sent by the townspeople at $5,000. This is what we have set aside for library use. So as I had mentioned last time we had this discussion, I said to Betty today, while there is an expectation that Town of Ashland is gonna receive a check, and I'd left it to them to decide if they're gonna send another check, if they only send $5,000 once again, my recommendation, as we earlier talked about, was take it as payment for partial payment. And here he does receive the balance, which is $55,000, $60,000, as a receivable. And after the first year, if it doesn't get paid, then you can make decisions on what you want to do, at least you haven't negotiated down the fee. But I gave them good numbers, they had over 300 visitors from Miss Arvis, whether it's one person or 300, doesn't matter, the point is they're using the library pretty regularly, and it's not just 25 people who have a library card. And that's what they're trying to make the case on, only 25 people have a library card. Well, that's not the case because 17 kids from grades two through seven use that library pretty regularly and they have class maintenance over there. So there's plenty of usage and the community is monitoring every town and the usage. So we've got numbers showing that they're using the library for only 200-plus citizens, they've got pretty good, it's like 1.2 visit per person in Town of Lat, Miss Arvis right now, which means if everybody went to the library, that comes up to the 300 usages that they've used at the library. So whether they think there's only 25 people using it, it's irrespective of the fact that going through the door is, Miss Arvis people, 300 to two times, have it December 6th. So bottom line is, I fully expect that maybe they will send a check, now it may be still $5,000, but I would say at this stage, you go ahead and cash it, carry the amount due as a receivable, and then you see what happens after the first year, they don't make any more payment at some point in time, you can either do collection and/or do it as a bad debt write-off as uncollectible. No sense carrying on the books if they're never gonna pay it.
So are they gonna be aware that if we do it, what you just suggested, that that's only a payment, it's not paid full?
Well, I would suggest that what you instruct for me to do is, if we get a check come in, we will send back receipts saying, receive as partial payment towards bill of $5,000.
Minus whatever they, plus whatever they owe.
Yep, yep.
And how do we look at Garfield and say we wouldn't take your $10,000 for the police department?
We did take it, we did take it.
Yes, they paid, they paid a portion of the year and then they stopped it, but that's not what's going on with the library, they're getting full service. And basically the service for Garfield, they paid for what they got, and then it stopped. I would love to have the $5,000, but I'm concerned about what it says to Garfield, what happens next year when Portage says, well, we're only gonna spend this much money? Then do we write it off as a bad debt? It's really hard. I want the $5,000, or I really want them to pay with a fair share.
Well, and if you're continuing with the per capita breakout that you did, that number's gonna be very similar next year, the per capita number. But they've not stipulated or given us any indication that they're willing to send any more money other than buy that, so the letters, same with me, I'm just...
I don't know, I'm, it's been what, six, seven months since they charted the first time, isn't it? Sent $5,000, we sent it back twice.
Is that a historical thing? Is that the first time somebody hadn't paid their... Is that a historical thing? Is that the first time somebody hadn't paid their bill? Does anybody know?
I believe it is. I think everyone, in the past, everyone.
Some should be, I think it is too.
I've been here for thirty years, I hear it everywhere around the garden.
We just, we're, if we take it, we're opening up ourselves in this year.
Well, we can take it, but we still consider their account.
What happens if we don't pay our bills?
Well, we're not turning anybody away from the library. We're not sending kids away this year.
But that's a reflection on the town. That's what, that's what it is, and maybe they're gonna have to own it.
So what do you guys wanna do?
Just, we think we get a check?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a discussion there.
No, they shouldn't be made at this stage. Cause they know.
They know where we stand.
That's right.
Old table, aisle number two is the end of the meeting. So let's move on to the manhood report.
Okay, nomination papers are available for the two towns' physicians coming open. Just check with Andy if he's, any of the county council members that are coming off, are, you know, newing and or any other public person that wants to apply. We have a quick work here. Number two, last year, when we were at about the same timeframe, you all looked at bonuses for employees. And you had an account, which was the account that was used, utilized to pay for council attendance at meetings. And you had enough money last year that was left over from that account that you basically paid out as Christmas bonus for, for the people who have been six months or longer with the town as employee, two seventy-five. And if they were newly hired employee, less than six months, they got one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So we went and looked at your current budget for this timeframe based on the fact that you are all here. It looks like that account that you utilized last year is only gonna have about five hundred and fifty-seven dollars left in it, cause you had seven, maybe six years this year that you're getting paid there. So we ran some numbers, I ran some numbers based on, we have basically ten people that are over six months employed, that if we were to consider offering two hundred and fifty dollar Christmas bonus, and for the three people that are under six months at a hundred and twenty-five, we would basically need twenty-hundred, twenty-eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to make, to make those, to make that payment. And in order to do that, if we were to utilize the five fifty-eight left out of your account, that would still leave us short with twenty, two thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars to get to the twenty-eight seventy-five. So the spreadsheet that I gave you is, I gave you all of the department payroll numbers with our estimate for the end of the year just so you could see kinda where we were at. The most important numbers are, is the line where it says the total salaries. Where you see the total, total budget and the estimated for the end of the year. We're right at a hundred percent, one hundred point three two percent. So we're just a little bit above what the budget was. And of course, you'll recall, you know, we had some payouts for Seer when he left. And so, I mean, you're pretty much spot on in terms of your funds. You're about thirty-one hundred forty-three over in the payroll accounts. If you did add the bonus there that we're looking for, the two thousand three hundred and seventeen to make up bonus payments, that would put the total payroll budget over by fifty-four hundred and sixty dollars. And that new number would be the one million, three thousand six hundred and sixty, that would be our estimate. It only increases your actual payroll account, you know, by point five four percent. So it's a minuscule number. You're still under a hundred and one percent of projected budget against actual payroll for the year. So it's not breaking the bank, basically is what I'm trying to say. If you were to do this, and you can see the breakdown there on the bottom line, show me the money that's left in your council fund, it's the five hundred and fifty-eight bucks, you know, the amount. So it is your pleasure to decide whether or not you're interested in doing that and whether or not, we, if we were to do it, the twenty three hundred and seventeen dollars, we would just take it out of the normal department payroll accounts for each department, where the people actually are, you know, in terms of the climate they're in, okay?
I think the employees should have Christmas bonus.
It's, it's a little bit less than last year, but it's still a bonus, so.
They, they make it out of work at this time of year, you know, things are tight. If we can do that, it's for sure.
I make a motion that we approve the bonus as presented. That was the two fifty and the one twenty-five, correct?
Right.
For a total of?
Twenty-eight seventy-five.
That's it.
My second. And our funds will, we will take the remainder of the council fund, and then the remainder comes from the department accounts.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Yeah, I'll try to go fast on the next step. We did solicit three farmers for that, that, for a preventer unit. We, one could not do the work, second one did not reply. We did get a reply from the Comptons Farming at Fescile, and the estimate on that is ten thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars. My recommendation is that we consider hiring Comptons to do it, but we do it after the first year and be part of the twenty twenty-five budget. And this is a, this is the request that came from Warner District to make sure that we fix that, that backflow preventer.
What budget does that fall under? Is that under the fire department?
Well, it's primarily fire department because they're the primary user. When they do the fills on the trucks, it's their backflow that causes the problem, bottom line. So it would be become, we would need to include that in, on the fire department budget.
I make a motion that we approve the ten thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars in next year's budget, the twenty twenty-five budget, to fix, to install the backflow preventer.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Next item, the new family and medical leave legislation that got passed here instead of me kicks in January first. Employers with over fifteen people on the payroll, just us, we can either pay, the town can pay one percent, or it can be split with the employees at a fifty-fifty split. And based on our current estimate, we're estimating that that's gonna be a twelve thousand dollar cost to fund that account at the one percent. So if it's split, the town would be responsible for six thousand, and the employees' component would be six thousand. And that would be just another line item that shows up on the pay stub, just like five thousand, their health insurance, their insurance. It would take family medical leave, their, their portion, which is basically one half of one percent of their, of their payroll number. But again, we have a choice. Either the town can pay the full one percent, or we split it with employees. Now, interestingly enough, even though it kicks in in terms of payment, January one, they haven't got the rules all written, so it's not even gonna kick in until August twenty twenty-six for somebody to actually be able to use the family medical leave, okay? So they're gonna pay, pay in for a whole year, but they're not gonna be able to access it.
There's also no, I think, emergency stop before then.
Oh, really?
I think that happens a lot.
So just another thing that our legislature has burdened on the local communities.
Well, that, that gives a twelve week payout for somebody to take family medical leave paid for twelve weeks.
Yeah, I don't know the.
The charity, the charity, I've got the bill, and we're part of it right now.
Yeah. But anyways, it's a one percent deal to the town, or we have, we can split it with the boys. It's kinda your choice as council, how you wanna do it.
What are other towns doing?
I don't know that other towns have shared what they're doing, because this pick, the, the, when was the meeting you had, ten days ago?
I can tell you, I'm involved, cause I got questioned today. They wanna do the one percent, they want to be the employees.
Who's involved?
And I was under the impression that the one percent, we need a one percent for the employee, or, or something, so I don't know how we're doing that.
Yeah, I don't think we can charge them a one percent.
No, I don't think that they can put it all on the employees. Good point. It's similar to unemployment, is what it's similar to.
How many people can take these leaves before the fund runs out of money? Cause it don't seem to me like one percent of the payroll is gonna be able to handle.
Gonna keep going up.
The burden's gonna fall on where?
And it, and it doesn't matter if you have one employee, if you're a single, uh, uh, self-employed, you have to pay it. It's everybody that gets rich is having it.
I think the state is putting funds into this, you know? Where's all the funds coming from?
From us. They, they, for the employees.
Yeah.
Making a decision.
One percent of nothing.
Yeah, does it need to be tonight?
Yeah.
It has to be tonight. So we wanna.
I say we send the bill, the office.
I'm not sure where those cars, cause I look in the, she takes care of the money.
Like them, they sell zero, so one percent of zero is zero. I don't draw a paycheck. So I'm, I'm saying, I should abstain, cause I don't have an opinion.
So what do we wanna do? How, how, how we can absorb every, everything?
A hundred thousand dollars of meaning that we vote on?
I know, I know, we spent so much money tonight, I don't know.
You can only do that to me, guys, so.
Tell me what you wanna do, I'll make the motion.
Can this be?
I wanna pull them Miss Ardis and send this back to them saying, well, we ain't nothing.
Here we go. That would be good.
I don't, I don't know. Why do I have to pay for somebody else?
I don't know, you need that.
But it's not just the employee. If you've got a friend that's sick, you can take your time off to go with your friend that's sick. Not just, I mean, it's not just your family.
No, this is never like, what is that, the one percent?
Family, family.
The numbers here, this twelve thousand is sort of our estimate on our total payroll. Cause our total, our estimate is one point two million for twenty twenty-five, so one percent of that is twelve thousand dollars. So somehow, we pay the twelve thousand and or we split it with the boys. We pay six and eight, and the bulk of our, all of our employees pay into that pool, which would come up to the six thousand.
What would, what would the percentage per employee be out of that six thousand? How many employees do we have? Like, I don't wanna sit here and make a decision on Stacy if it's gonna cost him a thousand dollars, but if it's gonna cost, you know, him two hundred, the town two hundred for him, it's easier to say, well, no, no, that's.
If you know your gross is three thousand dollars, let's say, one half of one percent, that's what he's gonna pay.
So fifteen, fifteen dollars?
Yeah.
And that's every pay tier.
I can do that.
So I mean, it is.
Four down to yes.
Yeah.
This is, well, we just, like, we're, we can change this every year, right? So if this fifty-fifty isn't working, and there's another, this level, we want to jump to different.
They're gonna change the percentage anyway.
Right, everything's gonna change.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'd be in favor of fifty-fifty. I don't know, but I'm, I'm looking for options.
I, there, there's no good option. All right, I make a motion that we move forward with failing medical leave legislation and what would the employee have to do.
I electantly second it.
All right, well, I don't wanna make the motion either, but it.
I'll just like manage your social security.
We're being forced to make this decision. I crushed what I'm throwing back at.
Any more discussion on that? Well, me, I, every business does that, maybe? The services have.
Yeah, they said, we get compliance, one percent of nothing's nothing.
Yeah, everybody that issues W two says, why are you doing this?
Any way to.
Any more discussion on it? Dale in favor?
Uh, next item, because our snowboard on the sweeper is in our focus, um, I did go out and ask for quotes on if we could get sidewalks cleaned, uh, since we don't have the machinery to do it. I did get two quotes, um, and the best, the best quote that I got to do the four streets, it could be all of Station Street, Main Street, both sides, Exchange Street up to Hayward, and Route one sixty-three up to Hayward, was five thousand dollars for the season. And that works out to three hundred and twelve dollars per street for, on a month, for a month basis, okay? So it's actually not a bad price, given the fact that, but, but. Now, if we get no snow, we lose out. But if we have snow, obviously, it's cost, it would cost us at that fee, three hundred and twelve dollars a month to keep the sidewalks pure. I had at least a couple of people ask about why we didn't have the sidewalks cleaned last time we had snow. And then secondly, I had one person also complain about the kids not being able to use the sidewalks when they're walking from school. So if we're going to make commitment to keep sidewalks clean, we're gonna have to pay for it, since we don't have the right type of equipment to, to do it with right now. Based on Stacy's input, so, like I said, one quote, the, one quote was sixteen grand, but, you know, on the high side of the quote that I did get, the low quote was five thousand.
Give it as one moving snow and one not moving snow? Cause the sixteen grand sounds like they're gonna pick up all the snow and haul it away. The other one sounds like it's just gonna be put on the airlock.
It's just gonna be moved, moved on to the lawn.
Yeah, it's gonna be hauled away. So you know you're gonna get, some people are gonna call and complain, and some are gonna say, oh, that's right.
And I have, I have, we have a highway department to deal with that if we have to go rig some more.
All that, it'd be in the past.
I've already warned you.
Don't feel bad, Stacy.
You guys, if it's the season, they're probably gonna quit.
Yeah.
You do a good job, though. Cause I think it's a bigger job than they're putting off. Cause I thought about that, and I did some math in my head. I wouldn't have put a bit in as low as sixteen thousand, put it that way. Just cause I know it's snowing, it costs. I don't move that much snow, and I get paid a lot more than five thousand dollars in snow. Cause they got, are they gonna be short?
Yeah, they have to provide, provide six fifty.
There's, there's a third of what they're gonna make. I just, I don't understand how they do it for five thousand dollars.
It's a pleasure.
I mean, if you're doing it for five thousand dollars, I wanna ride around watching.
I just asked, what, what did you do last year, Stacy?
Used the welder, we did Main Street here, and as far as the library, but there's people, various people complaining they wanna haul them, but if you don't walk on in the summer, I guess I.
No, nobody walks, the kid walks.
I mean, we can go without cleaning sidewalks this way.
Well, I, I think five thousand dollars is cheaper than we can do it in-house, put it that way. So if they say they can do that big job for five thousand dollars, I wanna see it.
I make a motion that we go with the bid for five thousand dollars.
And I will.
Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Okay, North Main Woods, just a quick renovation update. They are in discussions with purchasing the Southern property. They're trying to demolish it. They're not seeking the grants at this time, so we would not need to worry about being a pass-through. The only thing they asked about is whether or not, once they caved in the basement, whether or not, if we had an opportunity to provide them some dirt fill, just to fill it, if they'd be interested in getting that from us. And I checked with Stacy to state the ditching and roadwork that we've got. We're going to be creating a fair amount of dirt. So it'd be great if we had a place ready, towns, and we could just dump it. So that'd be actually good for ours and good for them to get their hole filled. So I told them I thought that, that probably would be doable if we had the backhoe, which we certainly will. So if there's no objections, I will at least keep North Main Woods private, that we can probably at least provide some free dirt that we're picking up in other parts of the town, when we get ready to do the caving on it. And I think they're planning to hire Ian Rafferty, maybe, to actually do that demolition on it. And I think the piece would be that Ian will probably also haul it all away, all of the demolition stuff. So that'll help clean up a nice little, um, main street for a long time. Okay, number seven, library update. Good news, Hillary received a five thousand dollar grant from the Ron Henry Edgird, Edgird Junior Foundation, that, that move we use for purchasing circulation materials for the children's program, and, and her books for the children's area. So also, she's also arranged for, to be a partner with an organization, based on called the National Digital Equity Center, and it's a main base training entity, and they train digital skills classes to improve PCs, iPads, iPhones, Androids, Microsoft products for home education, working business. They're going to start their first classes January sixth, they're free if you're a Maine citizen, and they're fifty dollars if you're out of state. And they, they advertise, the organization advertises online, and Hillary also has signup forms. And if you have interest in a class, all you have to do is get hold of these people, and they, they come and they will train up to like ten people per time that they have a class. And we're going to use the basement at the library for the training. And in fact, I think they even provide some of the materials, like they bring laptops in and stuff like that. So this would be great for people who are looking for some training opportunities. And I did send letters out to the surrounding towns about that, and press releases to Star Herald, letting them know that it's going on with library. Number eight, it, this will be news to some other folks. The council members are aware of this. The town of Ashland was actually, there was an attempt by unknown assailants to do attempted fraud on our checking account through the town trust. They tried to pass four fraudulent checks, but they were flagged by the bank. But we had to close out our checking account, and we do, get a new checking account, and have everything turned over to the new account, which we did the day after the event occurred. And I'm not sure if Chief's done it yet, but we are attempting to file with the EG's office to let them know, because we were told that we were one of at least five different entities or municipalities that got hit with these attempted fraud events. Moving forward, we are going to participate free charge with the town trust. They have a program called Positive Pay System, and it, it basically is a spreadsheet template that they provide us. And so as our treasurer pushes out new checks each time, she loads this into the template, she provides it to their operations center down in Holton. So now we have a double check that anybody trying to pass a check that's not on her spreadsheet that she's provided, it's an automatic flag. So it's just another layer of protection to protect us as we move forward. So this is going to be, um...
What are they called, system?
It's called a Positive Pay System. Okay? And it's a, it's a spreadsheet template. So a little, there's a little bit of work for whoever the bookkeeper is or the county, but it gives a double set of eyes, because the operations center, where they process the checks, will be able to mass checks coming, incoming checks against the template, the template of the spreadsheet. So, okay, last, I, last two items, we need an approval from the council to have me added to what the bank calls third-party authorization. And all that does is it gives me an information-only access to have a conversation on the line if Tammy's not here, or you're not here, and like the issue we had with the fraud, they'd at least be able to tell me what happened. Okay? And it's just a form that I have to fill out, but I need council approval to be added to that form.
What is it called again?
Uh, the cause, uh, excuse me, the third-party authorization form.
I make a motion that we put Kevin Bushy on the third-party authorization form for our bank account.
And then the last thing, I'm requesting council approval. We would like to close the office at one o'clock on December twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve, and allow employees to have the meeting hours as paid time off administrative leave for those PM hours. And then, secondly, we'd also like to be able to close the business section, which is the front desk, on December thirty-first at three PM, only for us to be able to do the end-of-year closeout on the computer. Well, the people will still be working, but we need to close at three PM in case we have any issues with Trio, if they still reach in by phone up until four-thirty, and so we can close the books up, because after that, the day over, the next day, we have to have all the zero balances in the Trio account, and it takes a couple hours to actually do the migration from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five.
You agree with that? I make a motion that we have the office closed on Christmas Eve at one o'clock, and on New Year's Eve thirty-first at three o'clock.
I thought she was, I didn't know she was done with the motion.
I don't know.
I voted in the books, I was waiting for the hear, it's, I forgot where.
Is that it?
Yep. Did you vote for that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm on you, right?
Well, we all seconded it, so it's affirmative.
So what?
Uh, maybe, sorry, council, do you have anything?
I know, Dr. Tyler. No, I know.
Do you have anything else?
Um, I have a question. That whole tree grant thing, that's, last time, I don't know if it was all done, you're...
Uh, yeah, I think we've already closed, that's, oh, so...
Because I, all right. Well, I see here on one of the, on the equities, it says whole tree grant endowment, fourteen thousand forty-seven, and some change. But then in one of our payouts, they were paid twenty-two thousand dollars.
They, they, what do you want to look at, Tom?
Um...
On the financial thing.
Which one? The financial thing?
The twenty, the November thirty or October thirty-first?
October thirty-first on the back page.
Right.
I mean, and endowment is, I think I know what an endowment is, but I mean, it's money's given for gifts. But then on one of our payouts, and I think I see a thing that's paid to them for twenty-two thousand dollars. And I just don't, I, I mean, I thought it was all done with them. Let me see if I can find it.
That was the last of their payment, was the twenty-two. So the town would have that fourteen thousand dollars to do. From what I understand from here, is that's the part of the indirect cost that the town is allowed to use for...
Okay, because it's under warrant forty-six on the back page on the bottom. It's a whole tree grant, twenty-two thousand forty-five eleven.
Yep, and we received a check for that. And what's left over is what they call the indirect cost, overhead cost, for us to prepare everything. So that's fourteen thousand, is that what you're looking at on the front page?
That's hours, not...
The ten thousand or fourteen?
That's hours, yeah.
So that's indirect cost that we can use.
Oh.
It's reimbursed to the ten. So what's left over of that?
Okay. Yes, that's...
So that's all done, from where I, from where I remember you saying, it's all over?
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Chris?
We've pretty much covered everything.
I think it's supposed to be the fourteenth of January.
Second Tuesday?
That is the second Tuesday. I will be in California that day, so...
Lucky you.
That's like, if you want to lose a meeting, then I would, I would come if you moved it back a week. But it's like, I won't be here on the fourth, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. Make a motion?
Um, we would have to, yeah. Now we're in the executive section, I don't have anything to do with it.
I think, I make a motion that we go into the executive session to discuss the personnel issues from the state of Maryland, and take the floor of mine.